Council meeting of December tenth, twenty twenty four, at exactly six P M. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilman Werner. Councilwoman Martinez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Please, if you're able, stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I believe we have some additions, deletions, or modifications. Do you want to explain?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have, as I outlined in my report on Friday, there's two items I'd like to add to the agenda under new business. Item C would be securing the lobbyist firm of Louis Longman and Walker Law Firm as lobbyist for us for Tallahassee for the next year. Overall, cost per year is forty eight thousand, which is four thousand a month for the next year to work on appropriations for park funds and other items that may come up. The other item is the implementation of the four-way stop at Town Center Parkway and the Crestwind entrance, as well as the lane modifications at Waters Edge and Seminole Pratt for a fee not to exceed twenty thousand dollars contributed from the city to the district.
So if I could have a motion to add both those discussions, we don't have under new business items C and D.
I move approval of the additional items C and D to new business.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Martinez. Roll call. Councilwoman Werner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Sir, if you now consider a motion to approve the
Let's go ahead and consider a motion to approve the new agenda as amended.
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call. Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Public comments. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium and prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comment cards will be noted and may receive a response if necessary. Any follow-up will be handled by staff at a later time. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment cards?
We do, Mayor. Mr. Bobby Farber, if you come to the podium, please, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Always, Mr. Farber, please state your name and address.
Hello, everyone. Council members, Ken Castle. Monthly report.
I need your name and address for just for the minutes.
Bobby Farber, forty eight, twenty nine, St. Armin's Way.
Excellent.
All right, good?
She good.
Going to your new agenda, just a monthly, coming downtown Center Parkway North. Tons of lights are out. Blue lights are there. Ken, thank you very much. I see work going on. I see them fixing. I see work going on at the marquees. I do appreciate anyone who's been involved in that. They are marking the poles with yellow tape. When they're fixed, they're not removing them, giving the false sense of what's out there or what they've fixed. Dayburners, things of that nature. I hope we follow suit with some of the other roundabouts with the, all the new upgrades that we're doing, with the strips that are going on. Okay. Wind Dixie, we have an intersection there by the E R. It's as dark as night. I mean, I can't believe no accidents have happened there yet. There's no streetlights, nothing, no stop signs. I know there's a traffic study going on. They do have stop signs that actually have lights in them. And the same situation is on Ilex. So maybe something could be done with that. Again, this is a safety issue. We don't want anyone getting robbed. We don't want golf carts getting in an accident, pedestrians, anybody. We are going, I covered all of that. All right. The fitness trail. We have access to that on the south side to get in. There is no crosswalk. There is nothing on the north side of Green. So if you come down on that street, bicycle, walking, anything, the only way to get across is to go either all the ways back to Persimmon or you're going to go up to Ilex. I don't know if a crosswalk was ever going to be put in there, but it may be something that everybody, you guys may want to do. I think that's pretty much about it. Hoping these streetlights get done because we're on a good path to getting it done. I am getting a lot of requests on the webpages. They seem to be coming to me now. And I'd like to discuss at another time the problems within the developments. There's a ton of problems in there. And if F B L owns those poles, their onus is to repair them. Forty-day turnaround is just unacceptable. If even they do that, there are light poles that are down. They lay there in the water. We don't want anyone electrocuted. We just want repaired. We want the city lit up, but not so that we see it from outer space. That's it. I wish you all a great holiday and I'll see you again.
Appreciate you, Mr. Farber. Ken, staff, please take all those comments to note, especially the ones that are regarding safety. Please. Thank you. Do we have any other public comment cards?
Yes, Kim Lanza.
Please state your name and address for the record. Hi.
Kim Lanza, four eight, two nine, St. Armin's Way. So I just wanted to come here and thank all of you for my appointment last month to the advisory board for art in public places. Unfortunately, I was unaware of it last month, but thankfully my fiancee Bobby Farber was here. But I just wanted to thank you in person.
Congratulations. Do we have any more public comments, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, Ms. Lisa Johnson.
Hello, Ms. Johnson, if you could
Thanks for having me tonight. I'm not from Westlake.
If you could please just state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Lisa Johnson. I live at one seventy five, six, eighty ninth place north in Loxahatchee.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us and having your doors open.
Always.
This is my first meeting here to attend. I do regularly attend some other meetings. Of course, in my own area, the acreage of landowners association, Indian Trail, planning and zoning, and Palm Beach County Commissioner meetings. And the reason I came here today was to talk to you in regards to some news that I had heard about the big box stores coming. And I got the information from your own residents here. I know that the proposals will not actually come till the next meeting, but I just wanted to share our, some of our thoughts from our community. We know that you made a tractor supply and it seemed like almost that was for us because I don't know what you guys use it for. I'm sure there's some things, but really, you know, we're the ones with the land and the tractors and the farming. And we do thank you for that. I'm sure that will come in great use. We are concerned, though, with the traffic and the traffic studies and the big box stores, especially Walmart. We are concerned about having a Walmart in our area and what it will do to our area. And so I wanted to express my concern about it and hopefully the other residents of this area will come forward in that you would take their opinions into that. I do know that they'd like, and you've been trying to get some sit-down restaurants, but you know, we would like, like the smaller shops that are unique. I mean, it would really fit into both our communities really nicely. And thank you for listening to me tonight and happy holidays.
Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any more public comments?
Yes, we have William, I think it's Dirks.
Good evening. I'm William Dirks. I live out in western Loxahatchee. I'm also here to comment in regard to the plans for the big box stores.
I could just have your address for the record. I'm sorry.
Two zero, five zero, zero, Simone Drive.
Thank you so much.
And also traffic. Due diligence is needed before deciding this. Traffic studies need to be completed. What will be paid to the county for impacts on the county road systems? There are currently, there currently isn't proper infrastructure to support these big box stores. Seminole Pratt Whitney Road cannot support this. The board needs to push the county to pave Sixtieth from State Route seven east to one fortieth, and then later to Seminole Pratt Whitney, in that order. I understand that the board is inclined to build out more homes, increase the tax base, and reduce assessments. Imagine what will happen when homes on the west side of Westlake are built. And then G L Home starts to build on their land in the northwest of Loxahatchee. Much of that traffic will funnel through Westlake. It will be gridlock. And residents will be frustrated. And then one day you'll find ten years of got behind you. And then, and you did not have a plan because you didn't take a stand. I highly recommend that the board encourage the state and the county to build an outer loop roadway around the acreage, one that connects to the southern, behind Arden and going north to Sixtieth Street, along the edge of Corbert, until it reaches the planned extension that is going to extend to the Beeline Highway. Don't wait until it is all built out and residents are upset the way that they are now in North Lake, State Route seven, Okeechobee, and Southern. Don't put the cart before the horse. Invest in infrastructure and roads in advance of these big box stores. Look, look at Red Mountain Expressway looping around the Phoenix metropolitan. At first, people complained that it was far outside the perimeter, and today it is completely built out. Before you continue with more development, I encourage you and to implore the county to make proper proactive plans. Also, we do have enough gas stations in our community. So thank you for considering this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, you have Ms. Hayden.
Good evening. My name is Marcia Hayden, and I live at one, 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 eight, zero, Cobblefield Road. Not in Westlake, but in Wellington. Wanted to come to introduce ourselves to you. I'm president of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Alpha, Alpha, Upsilon, Omega Chapter, which was chartered in twenty twenty one in Wellington. We are eighty women with educational backgrounds and work experience in medicine, law, business, education, and social work. Some of our members are back there if they would stand to introduce themselves. Most of us live and work in our service area, which encompasses the village of Wellington, Westlake, Royal Palm Beach, Western Lake Worth, Green Acres, Loxahatchee, and the acreage. Our focus is on contributing to numerous programs and volunteer initiatives that support the uplifting of those in greatest need in the various communities through food drives, back-to-school supply distribution, toy distribution, which we are all just coming from, and assisting with hurricane relief, nursing home, et cetera. We collaborate with the village of Wellington for their cultural celebrations, Juneteenth, in conjunction with the Sickle Cell Foundation, the Holiday Kwanzaa in Three Queens Celebration, and their annual Black History Month Leaders Forum. We also support Golden Grove Elementary School in Wesley. We are proud of two programs that we wanted to bring to Wesley. Our SWAG students working to achieve greatness, Regal Scholars for high school students. Where monthly we serve as mentors and provide a series of test prep, career, and college residence workshops, cultural outings, and a seven-week paid internships to high school students enrolled in the program. SWAG gets its major funding from the village of Wellington. And we also have the Y L I Young Leadership Institute. Some of the students were going to come tonight, but they're stuck in traffic, I am told. And so monthly we engage with those children ages eleven through thirteen in leadership activities during the critical stage of development. And as I said, some of the students are on their way here, so you'll get to meet them. We welcome the opportunity to collaborate with the city of Westlake, like we do with the village of Wellington. And we would, at some point, like to give you more detailed information about our SWAG, Regal Scholar, and Y L I programs. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
There's no additional comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Love the public participation. Fantastic. Moving forward to presentation and proclamations, we have before us a presentation of our five K, our annual five K, not five thousand dollars, but a five K funds that will be presented to Principal Edgcombe, who's the principal of Golden Grove's Elementary School. Is Ms. Edgcombe here?
She is not. I'm her district principal, Candace Dye.
Hi, Candace.
She's, she bumped away.
Would you like to receive in her absentia, or should we just wait until she arrives?
She'd have some comments for
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind waiting.
I don't mind revisiting this. Do we have to modify the agenda or no?
You could just defer the item to later on.
Let's just go ahead and defer the item. That does not require a motion, correct? Great. Thank you so much. I also want to give a special recognition to our very own Vice Mayor Langowski. On behalf of the Florida League of Cities, we have a certificate for him. He completed the Institute of Elected Municipal Officials Level Two Program. So I have that for you. Let's give him a round of applause. And it's somewhere. There it is. There you go. Well done, sir. All right. Consent agenda. This section of the agenda consists of routine administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There'll be no discussion of these items unless a council member requests such, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda consisting of minutes of the city council meeting of eleven, one, twenty four.
I'm proof. I mean, second, second, sorry.
We have a motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have before us resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five, a resolution for plat of Persimmon Boulevard West. Plat six, city attorney.
All those individuals could testify during the course of the consideration of this application. Please stand and be sworn. You solemnly swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Please proceed. Mayor, if I can introduce the resolution by title?
Please.
Resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving the plat of Persimmon Boulevard East, plat six, being a portion of section five, township forty-three, South Range, forty-one, East, and section eight, township forty-three, South Range, forty-one, East, City of Westlake, Palm Beach County, Florida, providing for the recollection, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Let's also go ahead and disclose any ex parte communications, since this is quasi. I have none.
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 Excellent. Do we have a presentation?
We do. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, Donaldson hearing with Kotler in hearing here tonight on behalf of Minto P B L H L L C. And we're here tonight to present Persimmon Boulevard Phase Six. So this is one of the last plats of Persimmon Boulevard continuing east from Riverbend. So our team is here today. Miss Dewey is here from Louis Longman and Walker. And our engineers did a great job preparing and processing not only the plat, but also our roadway plans are currently in for permanent review by the city and Seminole Improvement District. This plat is about sixteen point six acres in size. In size, it also includes some open space parcels on either side of the eighty-foot right-of-way that proposed. We refer to those as rural parkways, as you are aware. Has easements that are dedicated to Sid, as well as open space parcels that are part of that. The site is identified on the map of Westlake above. And so the existing portion of Persimmon Boulevard ends just east of the roundabout, east of Riverbend. And this will be continuing all the way up to just, just about to one hundred and fortieth street. So it's, it includes both the road right-of-way, which is eighty feet, and about fifty feet of rural parkway, open space on either side of them that you all have become used to. Accommodates our multimodal paths and our extra landscaping that we, that we try to provide. So this plat has been prepared in accordance with the requirements of Florida statutes and was found to be technically compliant by your staff, meeting the requirements of the Florida statute. The cover sheet is on the screen, as you can see, and it has dedication language of the various open spaces and certainly signatures for the city council also to, to sign the plat. The roadway portion just meanders through the site. There's a sheet, there's multiple sheets in the plat which include technical information. And again, your staff has reviewed this and found it to be compliant with the Florida statutes and all requirements of the city of Wesley code. So we would request your vote of approval of this meeting, those technical requirements. I would ask you to make this contingent on Seminole Improvement District's approval. They will be meeting on this, their first meeting in January. And again, this is a fairly basic plat, and they're certainly in support of this moving forward based on that condition. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Don. Do we have any questions for Mr. Hearing?
I just have one. Reading the letter of eleven, one, twenty twenty four, and I think it's just to be sure that we don't have to come back and maybe correct ourselves again, but there was a sentence that said, this plat is now in compliance with the statutes. So I guess my question was, were there recommendations or suggestions that we need to be aware of that were not in line with our code or ordinances that
Sure, sure, I'll be happy to. Plats are very complex documents, and they're, contain a lot of language dealing with the dedications of various open spaces, but also it's, it's a mathematical document. So it's lots of distances and bearings, and different surveyors like to do things a different way. So when your team looks at it, meaning your consultants, they review every line, every distance, every bearing, and just due to the nature and complexity of a plat, there are always some comments that have to be addressed. So that is the answer. The other thing that occurs is, as you learn more as a city, you refine your dedication language. So as we progress, just because we did it that way the last time, doesn't mean that that's the way your city attorney and Sid's legal counsel wants to move forward the next time. So we do it better each time. I hope I answered your question.
No, Dad, thank you.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Hearing?
One question. On a similar note, on the plat documents, I believe it has an offer of dedication to Sid. Is that correct?
Yes, the entire, the roadway in itself, as well as the open space tracks and many of the easements are being dedicated to Sid.
Okay.
These roads are single lane each direction?
Great question. So the, all of Persimmon Boulevard is being, being designed for the long term to be a four-lane divided roadway. And so however, that need is quite some time down the road. So for, for right now, it's a single lane plus a bike lane, and of course, then the multimodal paths on the other side. If you look when you drive down Persimmon, you can see we've been very, very thoughtful in terms of the infrastructure. So the actual drainage and catch basins are all the way out at the ultimate road. But I would think that that would be many, many, many years before you would ever have that need.
But it's great to hear that we're planning ahead if we need it. And it also has the room for the bike lanes after we expand to four lanes as well.
Yes, sir, the bike lane just moves with it. Everything moves to the outer side. So the median remains consistent. And then the two lanes go out and the catch basins are, and the infrastructure and the drainage is already set to accommodate it. So that's all built into, to the design, sir.
It's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for Mr. Hearing?
Nope.
Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have, right, let's open the public hearing and see if we have any comments from the public on this matter. Madam Clerk?
I do not have any public comments, cards for this matter, Mayor.
All right, just like that, public hearing is closed. And if we have no further comments or questions from council, I need a motion.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
A motion to adopt the resolution.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We now have before us resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six, resolution for the plat of Town Center Parkway North. City Attorney, go ahead, swear in anyone and
Any individual who's could testify during the course of this proceeding, please stand, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Please proceed. Mr. Mayor, if I can introduce the resolution?
You may.
Thank you, sir. Resolution by title only, a resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, approving the plat of Town Center Parkway Northwest being a portion of section one, township forty-three, South Range, forty, East, City of Westlake, Palm Beach County, Florida, provide for recollection, conflict, severability, and provide for an effective date.
This being quasi, let's disclose any ex parte. I have none.
I have none.
None. Right. Public hearing, no, presentation, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, for the record, Donaldson hearing with Kotler in hearing here tonight on behalf of Minto P B L H, L C, L L C. And we are here to present another section of roadway. In this case, we're looking at a piece that's immediately west of Seminole Pratt Whitney. This is about a three point seven acre plat, and it's just a continuation of the roadway network that are defined within your comprehensive plan. So we're slowly building out each of these roadway networks, making sure before any development occurs that the connectivity is in place. So as you're aware, this would be Town Center Parkway North. And this section will extend from the, from Seminole Pratt Whitney, and it will go west to the large canal, the M two canal. And so this is very similar to design as what we had done with Town Center Parkway South, which is on the east side of the Publix, north side of the Publix Shopping Center. Contains all the turn lanes to accommodate future ingress and egress out of the respective development parcels. And it is designed to accommodate bicycle lanes, as you would anticipate, our multimodal pathways, as well as, you know, as well as our street trees, which are an integral part of, of all of our roadway network. So we do have street trees that will be on both sides of the road, very similar to what was on Town Center Parkway South. So I'll show you the location here on the, on the map. So it's highlighted right, right on the upper portion of the screen, on the north side of what we refer to as parcel G and parcel E. And again, this piece extends from Seminole Pratt Whitney west to the canal. It's continuing to build out the roadway network here in the city of Wesley. So the plat is obviously significantly smaller than we presented previously for Persimmon Boulevard, because it's a relatively small section. Your staff has reviewed the application and determined it to be fully compliant with the provisions of Florida statute. So this is a technical review that you are reviewing. And of course, it is consistent with your comprehensive plan as well, and has been reviewed by your city engineering department as well as your other planning, planning divisions. We would request that you approve this similar to the previous petition subject to Seminole Improvement District's approval at their January meeting. And, but this again is, is fairly, fairly standard, very, very small section of plat in this particular, particular case. So be happy to answer any questions. Again, it's consistent with Florida statutes, and thus we request your approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hearing. Do we have any questions for
Yeah, one question. I understand this is just a plat, not the road improvement plans. But when you get to the road improvement plans, will they include the pavers and in the crosswalks consistent with the rest of the community?
Good, good question, Mr. Councilmember. Yes, so in all of the roads, we have the standard, it's kind of the charcoal pavers that are at all the crosswalks. So the crosswalks going into the adjacent parcels and the crosswalks crossing Seminole Pratt Whitney is where, not crossing Seminole Pratt, between, on the west side of Seminole or not crossing Seminole Pratt, between on the west side of Seminole Pratt Whitney, connecting the portions across Town Center Parkway.
That's good. Do you have any other questions for Mr. Herring?
Same question I had before. It's one lane each direction. Does this also have?
Because this area is in more of our commercial districts within the downtown mixed use. This particular roadway section includes two lanes in either direction, plus the, plus turn lanes.
Two lanes each direction.
Two lanes.
It's right of the two lanes, plus turning lanes. Okay.
It's a little bit larger.
Any other questions?
Bike lanes are in there too, sir.
Let's go ahead and open for public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comments on this matter?
No public comment cards, Mayor.
Okay, public hearing is now closed. If there are no comments from the council, may I have a motion?
I'll move approval of resolution 2024-26, as recommended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martinez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. If I don't see you before Christmas, I want to wish all of you a very happy holiday and Christmas season. And if I don't see you before the new year, I wish you a happy new year. But I will tell you that we did submit the permits for the Westlake Palms project. And that is in for permit, not only engineering, but the building permit application went in today.
Great.
Very, very exciting, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. We have before us SPM 2024-04. The applicant is requesting a site modification approval, excuse me, to modify Grove Market Shopping Plaza, a mixed-use zoning district. City Attorney, let's swear in any witnesses that?
If you have any, if you have any intention to testify in the course of this application, please stand and be sworn. You solemnly swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Let us disclose any ex parte communication. I may have had some, let's see if this is a joke. I'm going to go ahead and say that I did, just in case.
Sorry.
Yeah, just to be sure, I believe I may have a long time ago. But, so yes to me?
I have no.
No.
Yes?
No.
Okay. Presentation, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Before you, it's application SPM 2024-04. For the record, I was near Leon, city planner for the city of Westlake. The applicant is requesting a site plan modification approval to modify the Grove Market Shopping Plaza in the mixed-use zoning district. The applicant is proposing to change the building facade for a new grocery store.
Oh, no, I haven't had any ex parte on this.
Again, general location where the Grove Market Shopping Plaza is located. From background, on June 14, 2021, City Council approved a site plan modification to allow an upgrade to the entire architecture facade for the Grove Market Shopping Center. City Council also approved a site plan modification to increase the square footage to the grocery store floor plan, also upgrading the facade and interior modifications. On August 9, 2021, Council approved conditions, a master sign plan to allow an upgrading wall wall signs, monument signs, and tenant signs for the Grove Market Shopping Center. October 11, 2021, Council approved application SPR 2021-08, including landscaping plans, improvements to the parking area, dumpster enclosures, and cover walking areas. On September 5, 2023, Council approved application SPM 2023-05 to modify the existing Grove Market Parcel D, increasing the previously approved square footage for a one-story building for retail and office use. Again, the applicant is requesting a site plan modification specifically for Building A, occupying the current Winn-Dixie Grocery Store, a new grocery store, 28,594 square foot for Aldi, and two future retail tenants occupying 16,905 square feet and 6,646 square feet. General location where the grocery store and the two tenants, this is the same space as currently as the Winn-Dixie currently. The applicant is proposing to locate the shopping cart inside the building. Staff is recommending a condition of approval to remove all existing shopping cart corrals from the parking lot. Site elements such as landscaping, parking setbacks, or would not be impacted for this approval. All the parking overall square footage, all will be maintained, no change to that. The applicant is proposing to modify the building facade by updating it with a new paint and storefronts, preserving the existing plaza paint color scheme and stone. The existing Winn-Dixie red canopy is over the windows and storefront entry will be painted to match the existing umbrella gray. And this is their proposed architectural elevation. This slide shows the existing and the proposed architectural elevations. Again, this is the existing plaza conditions, you can see Winn-Dixie there. Some of the parking lot area. Again, no changes to the landscape during its traffic. Our staff recommends the following condition of approval. The applicant shall remove all existing shopping cart corrals from the parking lot prior to issuing a certificate of occupancy. And planning and zoning engineering departments recommend that condition and also no objections to their approval.
Great, thank you, Uncle. I have a handful of questions. I guess the logic of removing the cart corrals is because you have to insert a quarter in order to get a cart, which means in order to get your quarter back, you're bringing the cart back yourself?
Correct, that's the normal operation for Aldi. We also have the applicant here for Aldi, and they do have a presentation as well.
Oh, all right, so I'll wait and wait for you guys to get up for the rest of my questions here. Does anybody else have any questions for our staff?
No, I'll wait.
No.
Okay, thank you. Please.
Hi, my name is Tracy Tlatfelter. I work for Fachi Peterson, Architective Record for Aldi, and this is Eric Periello.
I didn't mention that.
Director, or be in this region.
Excellent, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Do I need an address for the record?
If you could, yes, sir.
Please, if you could.
Your office address.
State the office address for the record, thank you.
2600 Maitland Center Boulevard, Maitland, Florida.
Great, carry on.
So our presentation consists of Aldi moving into the Winn-Dixie space. They will be splitting that space between the Aldi and two future tenants. We did agree to the removal of the shopping cart corrals as a condition of approval. And additionally, there were some addressing updates that was done as well to allow for some consistency within the element with the addressing. So I'll open up any questions that you have.
Sure, I've got, I've got a handful. I guess my first question is the existing liquor store. Is that staying or is that going? It looks like it's staying according to the elevations, but it's a Winn-Dixie Liquor Store. What happens to that?
It's not staying. It will be the, one of the future tenants.
So that is one of the spaces?
Correct.
So the exact, so just walk me through this, please. So the entire size of Winn-Dixie plus the liquor store. Winn-Dixie is getting basically sliced up to be just an Aldi. Liquor store becomes empty and a future tenant, and then the right-hand side will be something else.
Will be a future tenant, empty spaces.
Well, the liquor store is currently on the left-hand side of.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're four.
So right-hand side.
North side.
Got it. And is there cart corrals with any Aldi stores?
They do have.
Potentially, if it's an inline site, we've had them, but our prototypical is to not have cart corrals.
I guess this might be a question for my staff, but what happens to the space that the cart corral was in? Does that just become parking?
We talk about turning it into all cart parking.
Love that, sold, love that idea, very well done, thank you. I guess I'll open it up to my council. I think that pretty much answers my questions.
My question kind of ties to what we've asked the other tenants with traffic. So now we've gone from one store Winn-Dixie to now three stores. And I don't know if we know what the other stores are, but will that be bringing in additional traffic with the bank? I guess with all of that happening, are we looking at the traffic impact and the traffic pattern? I know we had someone just talk about exiting the Winn-Dixie Shopping Center. So are we looking at the flow of traffic now from an additional three stores? Well, I guess it's additional two stores.
Yeah, so there's not really an increase in square footage. So I believe the traffic and the parking would have been accounted for in that original square footage for the Winn-Dixie. So we don't foresee any additional traffic issues with the additional tenants.
Because I would think of one store versus three.
Well, it really is an additional one store, because liquor store is kind of its own thing, it becomes something.
What if it's a, I don't know, restaurant? And the other is a?
That would be great if it was a restaurant.
I know, so you've got that traffic, so you've got the Gator Shack, you've got another restaurant, you've got Aldi, and then you have, I don't know, a shopping clothing store, something, I don't know. To me, that's bringing more people to that area. So and again, I was just wondering if that was even an impact, but maybe it's not, so.
I think they use the square footage of the building when they do traffic study. Again, I'm sure some users bring more traffic than others. We don't know what the users are going to be for the future space. We prefer to have users that are less parking intensive at Aldi, because we don't want somebody taking all the parking, like a jam. Necessarily have everything restricted, but.
So let me, let me ask you this. So you guys obviously don't own the plaza, your tenants in the plaza, but you're now subletting your own space to other tenants? Is that basically how this is going to work out?
That is.
Got it. Is this something you guys practice in other, in other places? You have?
Common, it's not all these.
Okay.
Thing, you know, we don't want to be landlords, but in this situation.
I assume you're locked into a long-term lease, and that's why you're doing this?
It makes sense to me.
Okay. Do you want to give us some inside baseball as who the potential tenants might be? Really?
If somebody's even negotiating.
Okay.
Fair share unless they've got something in their plat.
Fair enough. Any other questions?
I think he's going to.
Yes.
Regarding Leonard's question, so the shopping plaza has a one parking, regarding parking counts, it's not defined as each uses, so it's a shopping center parking rate.
The square footage for the entire building?
Correct.
Okay.
And that works the same as the traffic calculations, the way they do it. So it's not, you know, individual use when it's a shopping center, it's one parking rate.
Got it, thank you.
Councilman Werner?
The prototypical store that you're putting in, is it comparable to other Aldis? Is it larger, is it smaller?
This floor footprint is larger, but it's back room, not the sales floor is prototypical, pretty much. Based on the shape of the space, we ended up having more space in our back room for storage, which is not necessarily needed space for Aldi, but it's, you know, we would take the space for, so.
Okay, and I understand the shopping carts will be returned and stored inside the store. But when a customer goes out to their vehicle to unload their product, and if they choose to leave it in the parking lot, the shopping cart, how does that correlate?
Yeah, so we would have staff do it if they remain out there, but Aldi customers generally know the process. A lot of times they'll bring it up and get the quarter back. They'll wrap the cart and they'll use that, and then they'll get a free quarter.
So that's been 100% effective?
Oh, it's effective, yeah.
Or I'll give you an example, excuse me.
All the time, you know, you're going to have a bucket there that somebody needs in a spot. But we do have employees that are supposed to check in, and it's not an issue. It's less of an issue.
Right.
Even to go to any other shopping place with corrals, they still have carts that they make to the corrals.
So the next customer can grab that parking?
Get a quarter.
And save a quarter and maybe earn a quarter.
Well, I was going to tell you, that's exactly what happened to me. So I've been in one Aldi, and it's the one here in Laxahatchee. And as we were going to take our cart back, somebody said, here's a quarter, and we'll take the cart. I was like, oh, okay, that's a thing, so yeah.
I'll actually chime in also. I did not, I went to Aldi for the first time relatively recently, hearing that we were getting one. And I didn't know the process. And somebody, you know, I did my normal process where somebody finished loading their groceries. And I was like, oh, I'll take that cart. And they kind of reluctantly gave me the cart, because I didn't know about the order deal. And then when I returned the cart, give me a quarter, and then I figured it out. So one way or another, I think the cart's.
So you owe them a quarter.
To that random person out there, yes, I owe you a quarter. I didn't know. I promise you, I didn't know.
So weird.
They're like, sure, I guess you could have the cart. And I was like, thanks, you guys are weird.
One more question. There is an Aldi's not far on Southern from here.
Correct.
Could you not have considered a Trader Joe's?
We don't.
It's just.
I understand that Aldi owns Trader Joe's.
Yeah, it's, it's not that, it's not that simple. There's two completely separate.
Oh, if you could speak it to the mic, sorry.
I'm sorry, you want the history, the history is there's a couple of brothers that started Aldi. They split the company in half in the 1960s. One took Aldi North, the other took Aldi South. We're Aldi South, Aldi USA. The Aldi North brother came in and purchased Trader Joe's from the gentleman in California who started the business. So it's a completely separate business entity. And we don't operate Trader Joe's. They're, they're actually a competitor of ours. But you can see when you shop them, there's a lot of similarities, that's the reason.
Do we have any more questions?
I had a question. It's always exciting to have a new business come into the city, and thank you for that. But what will be different about this Aldis compared to other ones, let's say, down the street?
Different about this Aldis? Well, we're not looking to bring a different product. We're looking to bring the product closer to this community, so they don't have to travel as far.
Okay, so the stores never have updates or new layouts, anything that sets them apart? We have other businesses that are coming in, they're trying new models. It's always exciting to hear that.
Yeah, if you shop Aldi over the course of history, you'll see that we've changed and updated and modified our stores over time. Every new store seems to have a little something different, changing graphics and things like that. Product, though, is generally national-based, and we'll change, we'll change where we're putting things. We'll bring in new items, our Aldi finds, which are the special buys that we carry. You know, we're excited to be in the community, we're excited to get into Westlake and be able to offer lower-priced groceries to the customers and just give customers an opportunity to shop somewhere else and give us a shot. And if they love us like we're loved in other places, then we'll have a lot of success here. As you know, we've had expansive growth over the last 20 years. I've been with Aldi for 29 years, and we've just been blowing up my whole career with Aldi. It's been amazing, and it's been amazing to see the evolution. Those who know Aldi from the old days, you know, when I started 30 years ago, the product has evolved a lot, is much, much different. We've gotten better and better and better at what we do. We offer low-priced groceries by working really hard, trying to cut out the fat, you know, and really trying to get groceries to people at the lowest possible price without all of the extra grills and things that maybe you don't necessarily want, want to buy. Like, we don't have the bakery, we don't have the butcher. A lot of people like those services, but those services add costs, and a lot of times those costs get spread out over other items. So just a little bit of the Aldi history and philosophy.
Thank you, got it.
Yeah.
Good.
Will this remain a company-owned store?
Yeah, we're privately-held company, so we're not selling our stores to anybody. That would be news to me.
Can you get me the information on who is in charge of leasing and so on for your stores?
Yes, absolutely.
That would be fantastic. Do we have any other questions for Aldi?
No.
Team?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Where was I? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No public comment cards.
I see one hand up by Ms. Campbell. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Jackie Campbell, 15938 Key B Skeldine. Hi, everyone. Happy to see you in a while.
Hi.
Yeah, so I like Trader Joe's and Aldis, they're two of my favorite stores. But as far as shopping carts, the Aldi on. But as far as shopping carts, the Aldi on, um, on.
Southern.
Southern. That particular Aldi, they have altered their rules where, um, they don't have the quarters, they don't put the quarters anymore. So you go into the parking lot and you see the carts are all in the parking lot. I don't know why they stopped it a few months ago, maybe like six months ago. So I just would like to know if, what's the, is there a reason why?
Go ahead. If you could.
I go the old time, so I know.
Yeah, if you could. Is that the case or no?
That, that would be news to me. It's something that I will definitely look into for you because it's not something that we should be doing or plan to do. Our cart system is, is kind of ingrained in how we do it. So. Yeah. So maybe there's some issue that's going on with that store. We got to check out locally.
Okay.
I appreciate it. No?
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So, so if you could, in that same email with the leasing context, throw in the, the thing about the carts, please.
Yeah, I'll definitely look into that.
Awesome. Thank you so kindly. Do we have any other comments from the public? Since I opened it up? Nope. All right. Close the, uh, public hearing. And council comments? I assume none? We need to read by title?
No, sir. Just a motion to.
I just need a motion.
Motion to approve site plan modification 2024-04.
Is accepting staff's recommendation for a condition.
With accepting staff's recommendations for conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Martinez, seconded by Councilman Warner. Roll call, Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us MSP 2024-02 applicants requesting a master sign plan modification. This is in the same plaza.
All those individuals could testify during the course of this application. Please stand, raise your right hand, be sworn. You solemnly swear or tell the whole truth and others the truth. Please proceed.
Let's go ahead and disclose any ex parte.
None.
None.
Just as a catch-all, I'm going to say yes. I get a lot of complaints. You know, and this may, and I may have had some as part of a complaint from the, either the plaza owner or the applicant or some form of that. But go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, I'm Neil Leon, City Planner for the City of Westlake. Before you use MSP 2024-02, it's a master sign plan modification for the growth market of Westlake. Again, the applicant is requesting a master sign plan modification approval for the growth market shopping plaza. A new tenant, Aldi grocery store occupy the previous tenant's space, uh, Windexy in process. And you, uh, proposes a new wall sign. Such an application also includes two waivers. Again, general area with the growth market shopping plaza is located. Some background, on August 9, 2021, a master sign plan was approved by council, which included three waivers to allow upgraded to wall sign, monument signs, and tenant signs for the shopping, uh, growth market shopping center. Again, the applicant is requesting amending the master sign plan for, uh, in accordance with chapter six, uh, section 6.9 master sign plan. The application proposes to replace, replace the Windexy wall sign for the new Aldi wall sign in front of the building elevation. Two new tenant base will comply with the tenant, uh, signing criteria as the shown in the sign code. And this application includes two waivers, one for the principal tenant wall sign to allow 168.70 square feet or from the maximum allowed of 90 square feet. And the second waiver is for the wall sign for principal tenant to allow 41, uh, person 41, 716 inches letter from the maximum allowed 36 inches in height.
Can you go back? Actually, no, this is fine.
Yes. So this is a summary deviation table, specifically spelling out the deviation from the code required.
Okay. All right, carry on, please.
Uh, this is the Aldi sign location, uh, the main, uh, sign. That's what the Windexy sign is currently. And the existing wall sign of Windexy compared with the proposed wall sign for Aldi. There's also some copy areas that are going to be changing from Windexy to Aldi, uh, for the existing ground signs. No waivers for this. And the, um, based upon facts and findings, the planning is on engineering departments have no objections to the proposed application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Specifically, what is the existing height in inches of the Windexy sign?
For the main, um, sign?
The sign that says Windexy.
So the Windexy has 380 square feet.
And I'm asking about inches.
The inches of the existing height? I don't have that information in front of me.
That's important.
I know the waivers, uh, approved previously, maybe.
I'm, I'm trying to get an idea. It doesn't look like it's bigger in the picture that you're showing me. It looks like Aldi's smaller, but yet you're asking for more square footage, so something's not tracking.
They're asking for square footage compared to our code because they're changing it.
Oh, it is getting larger. Square footage is going up by.
No, they're going from 300 to 168.
So it's going down.
308 to 168.
So the code, the maximum allow is 90 square feet. And they're proposing 168 square feet. The Windexy currently has 308 square feet.
Yes, it is significantly smaller.
Yeah, almost half.
Yes, but it's still.
It's not the same boat.
Nope. It's still bigger than. Than what our code allowed.
I mean, the facade of that building itself is massive. Does anybody have any questions?
I mean, smaller sounds better.
I already spoke with staff.
Councilman?
Just one comment. If you go to the storefront, shows the front of the building, the signs. I just think the, the background on the Windexy sign, in my mind, is nicer than the brown background here.
Well, that existing, that's the application that was just approved, and that's the change of facade. And that's, that's how it's gonna, that's his propose, um, with the darker background.
So is your question, is Kennedy changed?
It's a comment.
Oh, just a comment. Okay.
It's a comment. I, I was curious about it when we saw that earlier, but I was mixing it up with your sign plan. And, and when I see the sign on there, it seems to me that it's not as
Right.
attractive as the, the white background.
I think that white rock looks pretty cool.
The one?
The white rock versus the slate gray.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't talking about that.
No, I know. I'm just saying, it's like a.
All right.
General hallway.
That's their choice.
I don't mind the facade. Ever any other comments from council?
No comments.
If we have, uh, no comments, let's open public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
Mayor, you have Mark Brunchley.
Good evening. I represent the owners of the.
Your name, sir.
Their four, oh, my name, Mark Brunchley.
And your address for the record, please?
3790 Beacon Ridge Way, Clark.
Thank you.
I represent the four LLCs who are the owners of the property, as well as persona signs. I'm a private planning consultant. As you saw, uh, the issue here is two waivers. The Aldi sign is 41 and 78 inches high.
Thank you.
Words. 36 inches is the max. That's the first waiver. The second waiver is the, uh, sign area, as was mentioned. 30, 90 square feet is the maximum sign area, and this proposal is 168.7 square feet. But I think it's important to know that the former Windex, or the current Windexy, because it hasn't been changed yet, have five signs. They, they got, they got a waiver for those five signs and 300 square feet. So this is dramatically.
Less.
Less and less, um, of a sign proliferation, if that's going to use that word. That's what all the zoners want now, to reduce sign proliferation in their communities. And this clerk does that. I have a, um, PowerPoint prepared, but you already saw all of those very same things would be redundant.
Sure.
Two issues, again, the two waivers, height of the letter and size of the sign.
Do you by chance know that's the height of the existing sign that says, uh, Windexy?
In terms of the.
Inches.
On, on the wall.
Right now, yeah. On the, the main side. Do you know how tall those letters are?
Well, they had to receive a waiver.
No, I know.
Yeah.
But at any rate, the Aldi is significantly smaller than what's currently there.
Significant, yes. Any other questions?
Well, you're going to have two more storefronts, so there'll be two more signs. She said you're going to reduce the proliferation, but there will be two more coming back.
But they will have to be no more than 90 square feet.
You wouldn't want us to approve a waiver for them?
It's up to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Let's close public hearing. And, uh.
Did you want to wait for else now? For his number?
Say that one more time.
Cross those inches number?
If he has it, I'd love to hear it. No, no.
It's.
If he hadn't, you can get back to me as well. I mean, it's, as long as it's smaller, was the question I was looking for. Does the council have any more comments?
No.
If not, I would like a motion.
I'll move approval of MSP 2024-02 as recommended by staff.
And including the two waivers.
Including, including the two waivers.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Excellent. Uh, before moving forward with new business, I see Principal Edgcombe is in the house. We have some money for you, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Martinez, who spearheaded the whole 5K, to make that presentation.
Absolutely. Uh, quickly before I present it, a couple words I come up with. So I do want to say it's a privilege to be here tonight, uh, on behalf of our community. And through our recent 5K, we came together tonight only to promote health and fitness, but also to make a meaningful impact on our community. So I'm proud to say that the proceeds from this event will be supported in Golden Groves Elementary. And Mrs. Edgcombe, it's an honor to present this check to your school. We know that investing in education means investing in the future of our children and our community. I hope this, this contribution helps provide resources and opportunities that will inspire learning and growth for years to come. And I want to thank all of the volunteers, the participants, and anyone that supported this event.
Excellent. All right. Well done. Can we get some pictures?
Was that getting to an ATM machine? Anita, Anita.
Ms. Kaplan. Well done. So shameless plug for the next 5K. Is what's, what's the date?
The 25th of January.
25th of January, which is. It's $2,014 and some change. I'd also like to challenge the city, let's try and raise 5K for the 5K.
Absolutely. I love that idea.
Let's, let's two and a half times, uh, what we did here for, for education. Thank you all. Back to, oh, you have my.
I have your information here.
Great.
So the Windexy existing, it's about, it's six feet by 39 feet.
Okay.
72 inches. And, uh, that's the total size of the Windexy.
Okay, six feet.
72.
Six feet by 39 feet.
Now, the existing sign says Windexy and it says something else small under it.
Since 1925.
Is that all included in that six feet?
No, so the since 1925 is one foot and nine inches.
Wow, so it's almost seven feet total. Okay, great. Thank you. Less is more.
Yeah, thank you for looking that up. Appreciate you.
Okay, new business. We have before us audit engagement letter with Berger and Tombs. Ilan Gaines and Frank, resolution 2024 authorizing the city manager to execute. City manager, do you have comments on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, they're a current, uh, auditing firm. And they're proposing for the next year, and the fee would not to exceed $7,775.
Is that more or less than we paid them last year?
It's roughly the same, a little bit higher, about $250.
Got it. Do we have any other council comments? No? I need a motion.
Resolution by title only, resolution, city council, city of Westlake, Florida, approving authorized city manager to execute engagement letter to Berger, Tombs, Ilan Gaines and Frank for professional audit services, provided for conflict severability and effective date.
Excellent. Moving on, item B.
Excuse me, sir. A motion to approve the resolution.
Please, sir.
Move approval of resolution 2024-24.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilman Martinez. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We have before us fiscal year 2023 audited financial report. City manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is the audited financial report, uh, every year by the external auditor. There was one minor finding, and it has to do with our, um, travel expenditures, which you all would remember that we have tightened up the.
Oh, yeah.
Requirements for going, coming in, receipts and stuff. So we've already started compliance with what their recommendation was in their finding.
Excellent. Council comments? If none, I, I need a motion.
It would be a motion to accept.
To accept.
I move that we accept resolution 2024 this. Nope, nope, I'm sorry. 20 fiscal year 2023 audited financial report. Sorry.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Leonard, seconded by Vice Mayor Langowski. Roll call, Vice Mayor Langowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
We have the item C that we added previously. Was that the four-way stop or was that the other?
That's the legislative.
Lobbyist. So item C, um, discussion on hiring the lobbyist. Do you have any, uh, comments, city manager?
The comments are, as we, as we look forward, we're going to be looking for appropriations. And in order to do the appropriations, I find it the most effective way is to definitely have a lobbyist onboard in Tallahassee, pushing our position on a continuous basis. They will also not only help us draft our appropriations request, but they will also work with the House and the Senate cosponsors of the appropriation and work it through the entire process for us. And typically what a legislative representation is, it's usually a year-long process. So if we start this year, it'll carry us through next, the legislative season this year and in the next year, getting us prepared for next year as well.
I have two questions. What's the dollar amount?
It's, uh, $48,000 for the entire year.
And what did we put in the budget for this?
I think I have $60,000 or $70,000 or better in it.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from council?
Just a question to the city manager. We're only being asked to approve the lobbyist firm. Do we also need to give council direction to the city manager to make the request for state finance appropriation?
I don't follow.
Well, just general direction. One of the things that we're going to be putting in for appropriations is dollars for the park, uh, growth and expansion. So that'll be our main appropriations. We're considering whether the city goes for an appropriations, whether Sid goes for an appropriations or we do it as a combined appropriations, depending on which is going to look like it's going to go through the process the best and get us the best return.
Any other?
And I'll just add a comment. During our Florida League of Cities meeting last week, they said the forum was going live on Friday morning.
And I'll just add a comment during our, uh, Florida League of Cities meeting last week, they said the form was going live on Friday morning last week for appropriations.
Any other comments?
Uh, I have a question. Will Sid also be using this lobbyist?
Uh, Sid already has him onboard as a lobbyist and has for several years.
So it's two, two separate hires for the same.
Yes.
Understood.
Because they're working for same, same firm, but they work for two different entities.
Okay.
That the group of, uh, Chris Lyons, um, I forget the other four worked with before. They're very effective. They also work for other, um, districts that I know of, and they have been very effective in appropriations, changes in codes, changes in, in legislative action for.
If you provide a little more explanation on the same firm being hired by Sid, which was already on, on contract with Sid and now with the city. Um, excuse me. Sid owns the property where the park is going.
Correct.
They're making the infrastructure improvements right now.
Correct.
And yet we're paying, and Sid already has a lobbyist. Why wouldn't they then also work toward the same end with the state appropriation?
They would only work it from the Sid side. They would not be working it from the city's side.
So Sid would not be eligible or authorized to make a request?
Sid may be, but one of the things that occurs is if you go in, if you're doing it from two different approaches, Sid can go in for appropriations for one item. The city can go in for appropriations for another item where you can get two. Or potentially you go together and you can get a larger appropriation for a larger piece of the puzzle. That's what we're trying to decide as to which way it's going to be the best benefit for the residents to get stuff done in the park.
Um, so the funds that are paying for the work that's being done now, you, you bought a lot of piping and all that.
Yes.
Is that going to count toward the city's fifty percent match?
No, that is, that came out of the, uh, American Restoration, uh, funds that we received.
So that would be our match?
No, that, that's a total separate. It would be a new match that we would have to come up with for whatever appropriations we're requesting.
We have no further discussion. I need a motion.
Move approval of the, of the proposal to hire the lobbyist firm. Did you give us the name?
Louis Longman Walker.
That's the name.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Councilman Martinez. Roll call, Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlangowski.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Item now D, which is, uh, discussion on four-way stop in front of Crestwinds.
That's, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. Um, received back about a week and a half ago, the report from the traffic engineer that did state that potentially, um, meeting two of the warrants, two of the four warrants, a four-way stop would be appropriate at the intersection of Town Center Parkway and Crestwind. Um, in order to do that, the council would need to, uh, direct that that occur, same as we did back when we did the four-way stop on Persimmon and Ilex. And then, uh, I need appropriate funds for that work to be done. In addition to that, the changing of the lanes down at, uh, Water's Edge and Seminole Pratt to prevent people from three-way making left-hand turns onto Seminole Pratt being very unsafe. Uh, that would also be included in this project. Um, it's not only the stop signs, it's the striping for the stop bars, it's the signs for stop ahead, it's the flashing, um, solar powered flashing lights, stop signs. Uh, and as far as the candles or what they call candles, the delineators for narrowing the lanes, all the installation. It's expected an initial budget presentation would be not to exceed twenty thousand dollars and there are funds in the contingency fund of the, of the city's budget.
So I'm, I'm going to echo the same conversation that, uh, Ken and I had earlier, just because I think it's important. Sid owns all the roads, right? Because the roads are not owned by the city, we're not entitled to receive any of the gas taxes from them, nor is Sid, because improvement districts cannot collect gas taxes. We are still trying to figure out a way legally, whether through an interlocal or something, um, in order to get gas taxes and then somehow pass those on to Sid. My question to Ken was Sid owns the roads, Sid maintains the roads, Sid collects a lot of taxes that a lot of people are complaining about, right? Um, in order to improve these roads, so why is the city being asked to pay for them? Um, and the answer to that question was, if we want it done now, which I'm in the interest of doing so because it's a safety issue, but if we want it done now, we have to pay for it because it's not in Sid's budget. We can wait
a year.
A whole year. Sid will put it in their budget and then the city won't have to pay for it. Because it's a safety issue, I'm inclined to say we need this done. Let's pay for it. That's my opinion. I'll open it up for council discussion. Bottom line is unless we pay for it, it's not going to get done now. Sid will do it on their dime, but they have to budget for it. I think we should do it.
Uh, I agree wholeheartedly. I agreed with your line of comments. I was going to ask the same question, but I have one last question based on everything
Sure.
you said. Can we pay for it now out of our budget and request a refund from Sid after they approve their next year's budgets?
That would be, that would be a legal issue. I don't know.
I guess we can request whatever we want.
Right. Well, we're requesting to the general manager.
Well, he's got a point as well.
Whether, whether you can re, put it as a condition of the request, that would be a legal issue for the attorney to address. Um, I will remind the council that the intersection at Ilex and Persimmon was done one hundred percent on Sid's nickel when that happened because we happened to have dollars in the budget at the time that had occurred. Sid is already putting in the rumble strips on the approach to the traffic circle. There will also be installing skip lines at Town Center Parkway South and Ilex by the, um, tax collector's office and then also at Persimmon and Ilex because people are driving around the wrong side and hitting the curbs and stuff because they can't figure out where the line is. So we're adding skip lines to those at Sid's expense already in their budget.
The
Well, I didn't answer. I, I didn't catch the answer though.
It would be a legal thing to, as far as a request back for reimbursement.
So it, it's my opinion, I don't want to hold this project hostage or the money hostage as to whether or not it gets done. I recommend in an interest of public safety that we just pay for it and get it done. But I'd also like to direct Ken Castle to take one hat off and put the other one on and work with Sid to either reimburse the city or perhaps we could split the cost of it, considering it's, it is in the interest of your, of Sid's constituents as well, very much so.
I also find it hard to believe that we have contingency money and Sid doesn't.
We have a number of items that are coming up in addition to the new building that Sid has done and Sid's budget is very, very tight this year.
You said
Next year's budget.
Um, we can, we can, what I'm saying is we're in the next, we're in the year, this entire year has already been budgeted very tight. We'll be moving towards the next year. I can put it in next year's budget and see about, uh, what the board wants to do with it.
See if they're willing to reimburse us or share the costs.
I'll take it to the board.
And, and I also want to really, really, really stress because I feel like I've said the same thing every single year. And I get the same answer is we're working on it, is let's figure out a way to collect these gas taxes. We're leaving tons of money on the table.
I will circle back with legal.
That's the answer I get every single time I ask.
Um, Mr. Castle, you were saying that Sid was footing the bill on some of the projects that are already being done on the road?
Yes.
Uh, which projects apparently being funded by Sid?
The, uh, rumble strips that approached the traffic circle on Town Center Parkway.
Are we doing all of the traffic circles or just the
Just that traffic circle for now because we've had nine accidents into that traffic circle.
You have plans to do the other ones as budget limits?
We're going to study again. You typically look at your traffic patterns and see what's going on before you take action. You know, as you notice, there's a trend, there's an issue with speeding or whatever. Uh, one of the things that was pointed out in the traffic study for the warranting the stop signs is that seventy-five percent of the traffic was exceeding the speed limit on Town Center Parkway. And it had clocked at least one person doing sixty-five miles an hour down that street. So therefore having a stop sign and being able to slow down traffic. One of the things we will continue to look at with the traffic engineers is potentially other calming devices, whether it's speed humps or other types of things as we go, continue to go down, as we notice traffic patterns, traffic speeds, et cetera. We'll continue to monitor and make recommendations and necessary modifications to the infrastructure.
Great, thank you.
With the rest of my council's approval, I'd actually like to give Ken direction to add a line item into his weekly manager's report. And that is where we are on being able to collect gas taxes. I'd like to be updated on this every single
I will, I will put it into my report too.
And just to piggyback off that, how much would we be able to collect in gas taxes if we could?
I'm not sure exactly. Um, it depends on lane miles, depends on how many lane miles we can collect on, depends on what the distribution is to the county and how it comes out to us. Um, I don't have that number.
And when you say us, is that Sid or city?
Sid cannot collect anything because they're a district, they're not a city.
Right. And since the city doesn't technically own the roads, the city can't collect the gas tax money for the lane miles. What we're trying to work out with legal, they've looked at a number of different pathways and haven't found one that works yet to where the city can legally accept and be part of the distribution and then funnel it to Sid to actually do the work. So there's, there's a lot of nuance that has to occur there. Uh, I know DJ has been in conversations with Louis Longman and Walker with Bob Difinderfer on this, trying to find solutions. But to date, we haven't come up with one yet.
Got it.
Into the effect, it's a sensitive legal issue and I would respectfully request that we be afforded the time to come back to your report and not have a just a general conversation at this point.
Thank you, Ken.
Just out of curiosity, would it easily have paid for these improvements if we were hitting?
I don't know.
The answer is yes. I just, for example.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, regarding this item before you, I respectfully caution this council going forward to entertain similar requests. Let's keep in mind, the city does not own or control any traffic patterns, roadway, streets, avenues in the city. You do not have a traffic study. So for you to generally state that there is a dangerous condition, respectfully, you don't have that right. That's a personal opinion. It's not a position of the city.
Understood.
And I would not want the city to incur any potential liability doesn't have today by venturing into areas that it's not structured to consider.
Thank, thank you for, uh, those comments, counselor. I need a motion.
Move approval of the proposed, uh, four-way stop signs on the skip lines at Ilex Way and the other road improvements that were, um, presented by staff, along with a request that, uh, staff put to Sid, a request for participation in those funds in, in next year's budget. I'm second.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Vice Merlangowski. Roll call, Councilman Warner.
Yeah.
Councilman Martinez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlangowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, let's go with, uh, council comments. Councilwoman Leonard.
Well, first Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, secondly, can we get an update on the school sidewalk, the path? Is there any updates or news on?
It's still under construction. They're not done. They were adding some fence a week or so ago. Uh, and until they get it to the point where it's acceptable to Sid, uh, we cannot use it.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Martinez.
Um, yeah, and actually all of, a lot of the, uh, traffic talk lately and I want to get the, uh, council's opinion. I would like to see if, uh, the council is willing to consider exploring if amending our code is needed for a distance between large box stores because of potential to negative impacts of aesthetics, traffic, and overcrowding in the city. I'm looking for consensus between council members for us to research other, other municipalities and possibly have a study done on the matter.
You repeat that, sorry.
The whole thing?
The, yeah, please. I just want to be
Okay. If council is willing to consider exploring if amending our code is needed for a distance between large box stores because of potential to negative impacts.
A distance between large box stores and what?
Between large box stores themselves.
Okay, got it.
Because of potential of negative impacts to aesthetics, traffic, and overcrowding in the city.
I'm willing to explore. Sure.
So the box store would be low or the, any of them.
There's no
Right now in our mind.
Correct. Census that he's looking for is whether or not we're willing to consider
Right.
limiting the distance between big box stores.
I guess my question is the why, like, because I'm trying to get clarification as because we
Yeah, impacts to aesthetics, uh, overcrowding and traffic in the city.
I heard that, but is it because we, they're potentially going to be within a six month, well, because we're only six months.
Only six months.
I think like, I know aesthetically, but
Mm-hmm, and traffic overcrowding. I mean, just to point out, let's say Jupiter, have you driven down Jupiter at, in the afternoon or in the morning?
Yeah.
It is mayhem. So just trying to think ahead of the city before we build it.
Just trying to get more clarification.
I'm certainly
I'm just trying to open the book for us to start looking down and happening.
Should I call?
Sure.
I'm okay with that. Anything else?
No, sir.
Yeah. Besides that, five K, January twenty-fifth. I hope everyone is signing up, getting ready. I'm excited. And like the mayor said, let's, let's shoot for five K, this five K. Uh, are we opening for public comment?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Nope. We, we will open for public comment, just not yet. We're still in our council comments. Vice Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Warner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to want to report, I attended the National League of Cities, um, conference in Tampa during the month of October. It was a very good conference, very well attended. There were like four thousand representatives from across the country. And the seminars that they were offering were very helpful to me. I also attended the Florida League of Cities Legislative Conference this last month, this month. And similarly enjoyed, um, learning more about the Florida League of Cities. Um, I was appointed to the Education and Training Committee of the Florida League and look forward to working with that committee and reporting back to the council.
Excellent.
And happy, um, Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah to everyone here and at home and throughout the city.
Fantastic. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Um, at your place this evening, I placed the information from our education advisory board that met last month. We're going to be meeting again in January. It's just some bullet points and brainstorming that we're doing currently, but we're looking at February, at the February meeting to have a presentation for the council. And I'll just say it, um, with the Councilman Warner, um, on the side note, from last month when we were in Tampa, uh, was elected to the National League of Cities Board of Directors to represent, um, it's good, not only good for our city, but for the state of Florida, um, for the whole country. Yeah, so.
Congratulations.
Well done. Excellent. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No, I'm done.
All right. Congratulations on that. Um, I'll be quick. Uh, Tampa National League was phenomenal, uh, very well attended. Uh, Florida League of Cities, uh, Legislative Conference was very good. I, I sit on that board as well. So now we, you actually have a council member. You, as in the city, has a council member who's a board member of the National League, a board member of the Florida League, and an officer of the Palm Beach County League. So we are very well attended at all the leagues, um, and have lots of control there, which is great, great organizations. Our holiday pop-up market was on Sunday. Our holiday pop-up market was on Sunday. Um, I went and I put out some feelers for some ideas on social media. And with that, I'd like to give, uh, direction to staff now while, uh, we're having a meeting. The, some of the, the largest kind of positive feedback I received was let's convert the event into a night market, like an early evening and then night market, uh, kicked off by a holiday lighting. So a tree lighting with a, you know, multi-display with Hanukkah and everything else. Um, so if we could start that in the early evenings, the greatest news about this is that I confirmed today with, uh, our city manager, that the green space in the park will be ready by the next holiday pop-up market. So it no longer has to be on Kingfisher, we have a big beautiful park to do it in, thus having a space for a big tree to light and, uh, big holiday display. So we'll, then there was some other ideas, hot cocoa and so on and so forth, which we could all figure out later, more activities for the kids. But I guess the big thing is, uh, if we could give direction now, that let's convert it to a early evening event, almost like a night market festival and, uh, tree lighting, you know, Santa comes in on the fire truck rather than, uh,
I'll drive it.
A golf cart and so on and so forth. So if that's okay with colleagues, sure.
Can we also try to coordinate it with the Wellington Parade? I think this is the
Not do it on the same day?
Second year in a row, we've done it on the same day and I think we need to be mindful of our neighbors and
Absolutely, definitely. Great. And with that, uh, thank all my colleagues for their leadership, love the public participation today and have wonderful holidays and a happy new year.
Your staff reports.
I didn't close the meeting. That's all. Those were the end of my comments. Staff reports? City manager, what do we got?
Got fire and PBSO back there first.
All right, we want to start with them? Sure. Chief? Long time. How are you?
Do you want my address? Hi, everyone. Hello.
Station twenty-two.
Yes.
Um, it's been, uh, it's been a couple of months, so I prepared a quarterly response time report. I know that you all receive the reports monthly, so this report is from, um, September first to through, uh, November thirtieth. So we had a total of a hundred and fifty-seven response calls to, um, the city of Westlake. Uh, just about fifty-five percent of those were medical calls. The average dispatch handling time was thirty-nine seconds. The average turnout time from when the tones go off and they get the truck en route is forty-eight seconds. Average travel time, five minutes and eight seconds. We're in over, um, overall total response time of six minutes and thirty-five seconds. So I have some exciting news as well that I'd like to share. I wanted to share it at the previous, but unfortunately I had to leave early. Um, with the new fiscal year, twenty-twenty-five budget, um, we had requested to have additional command staff out here at Station twenty-two. So we were awarded six positions. I have three EMS captains and three battalion chiefs. So, uh, we have three shifts, A, B, and C shift. So I have a battalion chief that's housed right here at Station, um, twenty-two every day, um, in service. And they start at October nineteen and the EMS captains will start full-time. And EMS captains, they will carry whole blood and, um, specialty equipment and things like that. So we are getting more resources out here. So this will significantly improve response times also to, you know, um, acreage, Locks, Hatchet, Groves, all those areas as well. So that will help with their response times as well, getting a, a unit on scene quicker. And also I wanted to thank Minto, they had been great. They offered us a property that they were going to demo and they allowed us several months to train in that. So we rotated units through there and they practiced on search and rescue, forcible entry, ventilation techniques, things like that. And that was very, very valuable. It was very generous, very kind to them and we're, we are very appreciative.
Are you, are you going to do a controlled burn on that or no?
We are not.
Not going to, okay.
Lot more involved in that.
That's what I thought was going to
No, no. We, we use smoke simulators, uh, but no, we, we're not going to burn it down.
All right. No, that was the plan, that at one point, so.
Any other questions?
Uh, do you think we can arrange next year to have you guys bring Santa in?
Oh, absolutely, without question.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Chief?
The, uh, command staff that you're bringing to the Westlake Station, is there any, they're staying here permanently?
Well, so when the chief asked me if I had room for more command staff, because Battalion Two, what I cover is nine stations and we service, um, Wellington, Westlake, Royal Palm Beach, the Indian Trails Improvement District, um, and Locks, Hatchet Grove. So geographically speaking, it is a very large battalion. And so I needed extra help out here. I needed extra command staff. And so when Chief Kennedy said, do you have room? I said, yes. And I thought I'll figure the rest out later. So they are right now at Station twenty-two. Um, the feedback from the command staff that is there though, has been very positive. Um, and I don't know what will happen in the next few years. Uh, we do have to look at a, um, Northwest Station. We need to look at an Arden Station. We are growing, the growth is out here. Your call volume has doubled, has gone fifty percent since you guys broke ground. So I really don't know yet what that looks like. But they're here at least for the next couple of years, for sure.
If there's anything we can do as a council to help keep command staff
Well, listen, I don't want to say go out and drum up some business, but
That's hard.
The fact that the call volume is increasing will warrant having them here. So, yeah, yeah. But it's good. It's a really good, um, attribute. It's a, it's a good addition.
Great for the whole Western community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Sowers with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Um, so for the, for the, uh, month of November, we had a total of one thousand six hundred and twenty-seven calls. Of those calls, we had a hundred and ninety-nine that were, um, actual calls for service and one thousand three hundred and forty-five business or residential checks that were self-initiated by our deputies. And we had, um, eighty-three traffic stops. Um, unfortunately, there has been a little bit of a spike on, uh, construction burglaries. You guys had, uh, six of them in the month of November. And it looks like three of them were, um, all related. And, um, we also had, uh, two thefts. One was from the, uh, seven eleven and another one was a bicycle from a bicycle rack, which was recovered and then
Good.
We had a, uh, side-by-side that was, uh, stolen, but that was also recovered down south in the Miami area.
Really?
So, um, you know, but, uh, one of the things I did want to say, um, from the bottom of my heart for all the residents out here out west, we want to thank you all for the outpouring and support that the community has given the Sheriff's Office, uh, over the last month. It has been absolutely phenomenal and has blown our agency away. Um, we've had support from around the country, um, our fire rescue partners, uh, but the community has been overwhelmingly, um, supportive. So thank you all. And they're also for your patience with the traffic because we realize that it's, it is taxing, um, having the roadway shut down. Um, you know, but we do appreciate the understanding and, uh, the patience. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for LT?
Nope, they're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Mister City Attorney, what do you got for us?
Happy holidays to the council and the very best in the upcoming new year.
Mister City Manager?
Again, I'll echo the attorney, happy holidays to all of you. I look forward to continuing to move forward. One thing that I need some clarification on your request, Councilman Martinez, is that a request by the council to conduct a study on that situation?
I think it was if we were opening to
We're open to looking into discussing it and, and looking into the matter.
Before you start looking at your code, you need to really do a study to see what, what has and what the effects are and stuff like that first.
I personally, I would love to know what other cities
Yeah, we, we can
and what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I will secure someone to do a study for the impacts of that request.
Yes, sir. And I guess specifically the question was big box stores.
Large box stores.
Large box stores in relation to each other, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Please.
Thank you.
One other thing is, um, I know it's been brought up in the past and I know there's some work going on with the, um, county and, uh, master transportation plan. But also I had a conversation this week with, um, individual from Wellington regarding their ride, on-demand ride program, uh, Freebie. It's costing them about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars a year. Uh, they had over five thousand ri- resident rides, riders since, uh, May. Um, they, what you do is you geo-grid, how far the rideshare can go. Um, it's an on-demand, it'll take you to, uh, theirs will take them to different places within Wellington as well as the hospital area. I'm looking into potentially the cost to bring that type of a program on demand for sixty-five plus or fifty-five plus, depending on what it is. Um, residents first, and that's what they've limited theirs to is fifty-five plus.
So there's, there's several of those companies, one's Circuit, one's Freebie, so on and so forth. I think we get them all in here and make presentations.
Agreed, but I'm going to dig into exactly what the parameters are before I start bringing them in.
Right, but let, I mean, let them sell us too, because there's ways they could put advertising on the side.
Agreed, that's one of the things that they're doing now is they're looking for sponsors. They eventually have one of the large, um, businesses over in Wellington that'll sponsor the ride, the actual vehicle.
Right, I'm saying there, there may be a way where it's no cost to the city.
Understood.
So we get them all in here and have them competing for our business?
As they bring them in.
And we don't have to bring them in on the same day.
No.
You know, get them all in here and, and let's, let's have them present to us. Absolutely. I think we're probably at that point.
It's, it's time and, and as the technology continues to increase and improve with the geo-gridding and stuff like that, that now starts to make it where it's an advantage and we have the population now that it's potentially time to start keying into that stuff. I also have a meeting, I think it's next week with, um, Palm Beach Transportation Group again to try to, well, it's my second one with them. I think they're now calling me back to see what can we do. I'm going to continue to look at, um, a route out here that's on a consistent basis as well.
Great. Thanks for all your hard work. Any other comments?
That's about it for now.
Excellent. Um, I know we at least have one person who wants to make public comment. Do we have any comment cards?
Yes, Ms. Jackie Campbell.
Ms. Campbell?
Two others, some things, can I?
Keep it under three minutes.
Okay. Um, Jackie Campbell, one five nine three eight, Kiwis, Canada. The quick one is about months ago, sometime last year, brought to about decibel levels in Westlake. Um, I have not heard anything since, if we're going to do anything or if it's been looked into to see if it can be adjusted in any way. I'm just asking. So, you know, I brought it up a couple of times and, um, I just want to know where we are with that particular issue.
Personally, I think our, our sound ordinance, being one of the architects of it myself, is very good. That's my opinion. Um, I don't know what the rest of the, how the rest of the council feels, but I, I like our sound ordinance.
It can be adjusted. It, I think it's too, it's too rigid.
Ms. Campbell, may I ask what is the problem?
Well, I brought it up many times before. I'm actually, I don't want to say here, but I have to make change in my life because of that. And it shouldn't be. Um, because of the issue I, where I brought the issue up. And I shouldn't have had to do that because of that issue. I don't want to, I brought it up, I don't want to put it out in public right here. But in any event, um, I think it needs looking into. Um, because it needs, it can be adjusted. And I'm not saying you have reasons why, you explained before why.
Right.
But it can be adjusted to accommodate the growing population and things what's going on with the city right now.
So I'll just add a little clarification. So is it because, and I know you've talked to all of us about it, but the homes distant from each other and when you, a neighbor or someone puts in a pool or motor, so you're specific, I know, but you're specifically talking about the noise level in communities where
It is in general, yes.
So not the city.
No, I understand, but it's So my issue is it, it's a very, very slippery slope. The last thing you want to do is make it illegal for somebody to mow their lawn at noon.
No.
Because it's too loud.
I can, I can be on the, I was in a committee in New York that the decibel levels for JFK. There are ways that we can negotiate and inform with, with issues, ways to, to, to at least, I know you have a, you came up and you're stuck with this because you did it, Mayor. Are you the main?
We're not stuck with anything, but, you know, we're all about reasonable growth and
Revisit it, how is that? Let's revisit it and see what can be done. If a change can be made. It might not be.
Right.
At least revisit it.
Okay.
It's affected, it has affected my life.
If you, if you could, I, I'm going to recommend you send Ken a detailed email, an explanation.
I'm, I'm fully aware of the situation and stuff and we'll get back.
Then we'll, then we'll report back to us.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
So I think it should be revisited.
Understood.
Drawing and think you're going to get more of these kinds of
I understand your thoughts on that.
That's the ease, that's the quick one. Um, the other one is, um, I'm going to ask counsel if you could consider um, more consistent with the meetings. I have been coming to meetings for various reasons, but the last one I came to, I rushed to get here, I got here at six-thirty. And the meeting, you had a budget meeting instead of a regular meeting. And it was changed and, and it was only half an hour. So the budget meeting was over. And because you didn't have an agenda, there was no meeting. Now, to me, this is a, um, community meeting, so people come and they have questions. Like I had a question and he told me, meeting is over. It was a budget meeting, but it shouldn't have been, would have been a council meeting. So people come in and you're going to have questions regardless of being, not having agenda. So I don't think you should just, just
That's your three minutes, but it's okay. I'll allow you to finish very, very quickly, very quickly.
So, again, my background was my biggest city council member or a community, we didn't change meetings even before election, after election. It is working because people know the schedule, they come.
Yeah.
We shouldn't just change meetings without people knowing and, and you're not getting, not getting notices either.
So, so I will say
This meeting I just found out because of something that, um, our council member sent over to somebody and I read, read the, the Facebook page. I didn't, oh, I came last week. And the meeting was changed. I didn't, I was away. I didn't know the meeting's changed. You know, so they can't just
Understood. So I, I, I will say in the city's defense, I will say that every single one of our meetings are publicly noticed. Um, at least what, is it two weeks?
If
Legally?
A month.
A month ahead of time.
Not more.
The calendar is always on the website. Sometimes we are going to have to change meetings.
And I do understand that.
We all were at the Florida League of Cities, uh, Annual Conference last week and that's why we couldn't be here.
I do understand.
Because we need to have a quorum.
But, but you also have to, at least, I mean, this came up in many meetings before, where you have to be more, um, make it more public. A lot of people don't know.
It's on the website always. It's always on the website.
Look, I, I, I'm on the website and I read stuff and I, you know, talk to people. Unless, you know, people don't know because they're not seeing it.
So in addition to putting it on the website a month ahead of time, what else would you like?
Website, not everybody goes anywhere.
I'm asking, in addition to that
Oh, you, oh, I'm sorry.
What else would you have us do?
Mister Mayor, it's also advertised in the newspaper.
Also in the newspaper.
It's advertised, uh, in all, it's advertised in accordance with all the requirements that we have to do on every meeting change is in accordance with all the statutes that have to be done. Beyond that, um, you're asking for basically an engraved invitation to every resident and that just doesn't happen in any
Well, there is a link on the website as well that you can click and fill out and it'll also send you an email.
I thought it was on
Every single time. You have to sign up for that though.
Okay, but, but I didn't get it, but I got it through the Facebook page. I didn't get your email specifically, but I saw it on our local page, just so I know a meeting was tonight.
So there's email, newspaper, and website.
And we can, we have, we, we, I'm sure these, um, like, publics, they have, do they have a community board or something?
I've got to, I've got to cut you off. We're way past the three minutes. I'm so sorry. It's not me, it's everybody in the audience telling me to cut you off.
Ask me a next question.
Uh, I don't think so, ma'am. You can email us.
Three minutes is up. You've been
I'm sorry.
Ordered the opportunity.
Thank you.
Everybody's interested what I'm asking, not just, okay.
Okay. Thank you. Other public comment, I had one young lady in the red who was, who was attempting, uh, I don't know, 30 minutes ago, to make public comment.
When I was speaking.
Yeah. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Iris Lopez.
You've got three minutes.
5585 Liberty Lane here in the orchids. I had no intention of speaking, but I felt compelled to come up and address you because I am one of the individuals in this development who is very, very much concerned about the impact that a Walmart will have in our neighborhood. I know when I decided with my family to make the move here, one of the last things I expected to see within close proximity of my home that I have invested so much money in is a Walmart. It's a frickin' eyesore, excusing my English. I think it will bring a lot of negative publicity to our development, not to mention the impact that Mr. Martinez brought up for traffic, competition to local businesses, but more than anything else, the crime factor that is usually brought with Walmart. And there are many, many people who live in this community who are opposed to it. We are in the process of getting signatures from the people who live here. I, myself, am ready to stand with a picket sign in front of the Minto sales office, if necessary, to try and thwart this, because I think it is an abomination that should not be brought into our development. As a proud homeowner, I did not anticipate this, and I think that, I don't know how many of you are going to. But I will do anything within my power to bring a stop to it, whether, as I said, signing a petition, standing with a picket sign, rounding people up, I'll do whatever I have to. But I would very much like for this council, if you have a say in the matter, because my understanding, according to what I'm reading, is that it's already in the pipeline. It's like it's a done deal, and that should not have happened without input from the people who live in this city.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comment. Really appreciate it. Do we have any other comment cards filled out?
No other comment cards.
I know we've got plenty of people. Let's go in order of how I think I saw the hands go up. Forgive me if I took it out of order. Let's please, in an effort of getting everybody home at a certain time, let's try to stick to the three minutes, if not much less.
Sure, try. I'm under three minutes, so I wonder a lot of the rest.
Your name and.
Name and address for the record.
Ready to get to that. Thank you. Well, you're in a rush for that one, huh?
Yeah, you too.
No problem. My name is Orlando Chivari. I live at 5211 Liberty Lane. I'm in the orchids. Good evening, happy holidays. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Castle, Counselor. Good day and good health. I'm at a crossroad right here, I don't know what else to do. I was talking to, I was actually communicating with Mr. Duran Guy regarding the pergola that I had in my home that I had put up. And we have a problem. I spoke to Mr. Castle approximately six months ago, we was trying to get something together. And, you know, I have to move it over the easements, over the easement for a few feet, okay? That was the issue. So I redid, over the, after the meeting, I got no type of, it was two, a couple of other issues. That, my children's, I repaved, paved the entire, not the entire thing, good section, because I have three autistic children, and they have walking disabilities, which I have all the medical documentation here. And they're all on disability, they have their disabilities, and this was going on. So I didn't do this because I wanted to do it, I did it because I had to. I was trying to, after the meeting, nothing was accommodated for me at all in any way. And I understand about codes, you understand, and this is all new to me, okay, when it comes down to living in a, in an HOA. So I redid it on the HOA, I proposed to move it over the six feet, the ones that are over the easement line, and leaving the six-foot setback from the back of the property, which, matter of fact, I spoke to Mr. Leon here. Good to see you, by the way. Happy holidays to you and the family.
You've got three minutes, brother.
And there was no concern with the back, right? And then now we're trying to, I'm trying to get this thing done, and now they have to move the entire thing, which is actually safer, six feet where it is right now. All I have to do is just move it over. And, and that's what I wanna do. And when I spoke to, and I coordinated with Mr. Duran Guy, this is one of the reasons why I'm here. He said that we can make an exception here in the city council, and that's why I'm here, which are good folks. That's number one. Number two, when it comes down to the stability, you know, the safety of my family, that's the main thing for me, okay? We put it back to grass, I proposed to make it what you call like a permeable system. And once again, it came, denied, they wanted me to put down grass, if I do that, my children are gonna fall, and who's gonna take responsibility for that? Now, he wanted the money for the property, I gave it to him. He wanted money for the house, I gave it to him. The house is paid. In case, as nine eleven happened, every single penny that I saved, just God forbid if something happens to me when God takes me, my children go nowhere. That's why I'm here. I did it all, and it came out nice. Forgive me if I don't take an extra minute, all right, please? I need help here. And there was no, no accommodations in any way. I do not wanna be in the courts, I do not wanna be in the media. I served my time as a servant. I, I'm not asking for much. This has been going on for a year, a year. Sorry if I sounded irritated. My wife had a bad accident a week, two days before Thanksgiving. I don't know what to do. Trying, but I gotta get this done. I gotta get this done. So now, one of his, his innuents, he was involved, and this is where the problem was. I didn't think the problem was in the bathroom.
You gotta address us, I'm sorry, you have to address us.
So, they were there. I went to their office, and I spoke to them, and this is what we spoke about, okay? And this is where we came up to, to, to address both issues. The stability for my children is the number one thing, and just to move over those two columns. Or not, leave it like that. Pay me a fine, let me give you how much money you want, you know, and leave it like that. Because technically, and my children, and my, one of my daughters, she's, she's under control of substance, she doesn't know. She could walk out and hit something, she doesn't know.
Ken, is there a, a proper format to request a waiver, or can you instruct Orlando or give him direction on how to come before us and actually request a waiver?
There's an application for a waiver, however, the bottom line is, Mr. Chivari installed all of this without permits, without approvals. He's exceeded the pervious and impervious area, he's been instructed that he needs to meet the pervious and impervious area. They've given him a number of instructions of what he needs to do to comply. That has not happened at this point in time. There is a, a, an application process, as others have come before you tonight, requesting for variances, et cetera. That would be the process, that it has to come up, it has to be on an agenda for you to act on it. We'll give him the information again to make his application, but the bottom line is, everything is non-compliance with the code at the current time.
That's one of the reasons why I proposed the, first of all, he's right, because I was going back what the HOA told me. There's all these mistakes, and they're involved in this also. I'm just trying to get this resolved, right? And when it comes down to the, I wasn't aware of, you know, all this protocol, but if we could come up with some sort of solution.
Well, so staff.
I just don't wanna affect my safety and my children. That's the number.
This is all I can say, is staff.
And then, on top of that, on top of that, it was talking about, you know, what's going on. I have people, Section 8 people, next to me, next to them, in front of me, and everything, and I have no type of privacy. Some of the stuff that we put there, what am I gonna do? We didn't sign up for that, I didn't sign up for that, right? But this is where we are. So I'm just trying to get this thing.
Staff is going to give you instructions on how.
I have a variance that, that, matter of fact.
On how to properly apply. It has to be an agenda item. This is public comment. This is not the proper time.
I wasn't aware. That's one of the reasons why I came, I think I sent you guys an email, I had a situation.
Staff will instruct how to properly apply for a variance, but it's gonna be the same thing. Our P and Z is gonna look at it, and they're gonna make recommendation to us.
Well, they're here now.
Right, it's not an agenda item.
Not the agenda. Sir, legally, legally, this council can't take any action this evening.
I'm aware of that. Counsel, I'm aware of that, and you're right. And I didn't expect them to do this like right now, here now. But this has been going on for a year, and the emails, there is a paper trail. I did email, and I did send, and I communicated with everybody. I have all the, everything here, everything here.
And nothing has been corrected to date, Mr. Chivari, so until you get it corrected or get the right paperwork in for us to review, it will not go anywhere.
Okay, so what is the next step then? The variance is right here.
Get with us, Neil.
Leon, sure.
They will work with you on the application.
Okay.
Get the application in. If it meets criteria that recommends for a waiver or some variance, that would be recommended.
Some sort of accommodation for my disability and my children?
If not, if, there's certain codes that we can go with and certain things we can't, Mr. Chivari. This is not the time and place to debate it. We have been given more than enough time. I hate to be so hurt on you on this, but the bottom line is, we have given you multiple times of what you need to do, and you have not complied with it.
Because you want me to rip anything out, to risk the safety of my children, and there's no ADA accommodations here at all. And that's a federal, and you're a violation of the ADA.
ADA does not necessarily, I'm not gonna play turn or something, my understanding does not necessarily apply to private property. ADA requirements are for public access properties. You're saying it applies to you. Bring us the, the vindive written documentation that says it applies to your private property, we will look at it as part of the process. But until I receive that, we will not go any further with it, until you give us the proper documentation for an application for any kind of variance or waiver.
Okay, because now I have the variance, and we're gonna start, but now we're going somewhere. And I appreciate the answer, because we knew at least we go somewhere. I'm sure we could work out some sort of accommodation here. In mind, there's not one, there's not two, it's three of them, okay? All this money is coming into the state, federal funded.
I, I appreciate.
And not a dime.
And have sympathy for, for everything that you're going through. There, there has to be proper channels, though. Staff has given you what you need to do next. I recommend you do that.
And that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay safe, and thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Ms. Tapiero, please.
Hey, I'm Rodriguez Tapiero, 5991 Whipperwill. There's a lot of confusion about Walmart. And as I understand that you guys listen to us, I'm happy Lasahashi is here, but as I understand that you really have no say about it, is that correct?
If it's zoned for that use.
Which it is.
We can, which it is, we cannot be discriminatory, as there are, there are conditions, like, you know, we have, I believe in our code, operating hours, so we can't be 24 hours unless they specifically ask for a variance, which.
Mayor, I'd be cautious, you don't have an application.
Correct.
It's a code, it's a code, it's the code.
I haven't seen anything, zero. Let me make that perfectly here. I've seen zero anything officially submitted to the city.
Okay.
At all.
So with Walmart and Lowe's and stores and fast food places, every time I come to the meetings, I hear, you guys have no say. Just the aesthetics. So Walmart is creating a very, very strong feelings from Lasahashi, from Westlake. I really don't know where I stand with it yet, but everything I hear, I'm not too crazy about it. And anytime I take one of their cards, I just remember how much I hate it. So it's not the Walmart of the past, let's be real. The service is horrible, the treatment is disgusting, the place, I could go on. The point is, is it possible for you guys, since you represent us, that you could bring John Carter out here? Whoever is responsible for bringing in the people, selling the lots, I know he sold a certain amount, Omento sold a certain amount of land, but you got, you have no say. You're very polite, you're very nice, you listen to us, all the complaints, and at the end of the day, you have no solutions, because you cannot do anything. So could you not bring John Carter, so they could hear, or whoever it is, not the attorney, to hear how we feel about everything they're doing? Because let's be real, there's million-dollar homes here. None of us wanted to move, nothing against Walmart. I shop at Walmart. I, I seek the deals. I have no problem admitting that. But I'm not crazy about a Walmart near me. So is that possible? In other words, a decision-maker, not us venting about how much we hate the idea, but yet you guys have no say.
I cannot compel, or we as a body cannot compel the presence of the landowner. We can certainly request it, but I will tell you that I know for certainty that representatives of the landowner are in every single meeting and can hear you right now.
That's great, but they have no say either.
They have no what?
They have no say, it's just they're.
No, no, the landowner has the ultimate say of who, who he sells his land to.
So who is, so.
I could tell you that they are listening to you, I know that.
So they're in the room, they're in the room. So could there be a meeting, could you invite them to have a meeting specifically for the community to come on out?
I can certainly try.
Instead of us picketing, perhaps a meeting?
I can certainly try.
Could you do that? That would be fantastic. So how do we know if you got that done, or if they're, they're here listening, so maybe they could.
I can certainly try to, to create some kind of.
So do we follow up with you?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'll let you know what they say.
Okay, well, let's hope that they do, and that we don't need to.
I will do everything I can in order to make.
I know you do, I know you do, and I really appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any other public comment?
Yeah, sure. So, real quickly, Ken.
Name and address for the record.
554829 St. Almond's Way, which is one. I want to thank you, because I've said it to you for six months, without transportation here, I don't know what we're gonna do. I think it's an absolute necessity, and without it, I don't know if we're gonna go forward. What I wanted to ask, as far as, and maybe they'll know, with all the, all the businesses coming here, do we have a standard for signage? As far as lighting goes?
Sure.
You know, whether they're backlit, top lit, so there is something here, and they all have to adhere to that. Everyone has the same signage on that.
Yes, not, or they, or they.
Same signage, but there are, there are, there are parameters that allow specific types of signs to be on the buildings.
Right.
But that's the code.
Lit, there's a certain way that we want it done, and they all adhere to that.
There are a number of ways that it can be lit. They have the flexibility to light it a number of ways.
Okay. And lastly, you mentioned the gas tax. Is that something that comes to us? Is that something that?
It doesn't come to us, I wish it did.
Me, no, no, meaning like I pay it per gallon? It's a tax levied to us via all the gas stations?
Correct.
So if we did that to get more money for the city, we kinda all have to pay an extra one?
No, 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 you're paying it regardless. We're just not receiving any of the funds.
Okay.
But you are paying now.
So you're gonna get it from?
We're gonna try. So the problem is that the city doesn't.
They're really gonna give you money?
The city doesn't own the roads. If the city did, we'd already be getting it back.
Right, so a kickback in, in some way.
Correct, it's, it's to help pay for the maintenance.
Making sure it's not coming out of my dime and everything. Technically, it is, right?
Right, you're paying for it regardless of whether we receive it or not.
Just not telling me.
You're getting it regardless. We just don't receive it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other comments from the public before I adjourn? I can have, have somebody else.
Yeah, I'm Space Man, 1762 Whipperwill Circle, and I've heard the comments prior to this. And we, some of us, we worked hard, we, most of our investment is in where we live, in Westlake. But we're having a good time. It's nice, and it's quiet and peaceful. And from what I'm, I'm hearing is that you're not, you have no say, more or less, if, if Minto wants to sell their property so that a Walmart can be built. But it doesn't have to be a Walmart. So, they, they, I mean, if we protest, it's not gonna look good. So, as was asked previously, if you guys can just send the word out.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I, I don't think I can allow it.
No, don't open.
I cannot. One, one public comment per person. That being said, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:09 PM. We are adjourned.